I'd like to call the March 6th, 2025 meeting of the CAVR Select Board to order. The time is now 6:04. This meeting is being recorded by Area 58 Community Access Media Channel 9 and will be posted by Area 58 on YouTube as soon as possible. There are openings on several committees. Please refer to the front page on our website for a listing and application. We draw mine, please, standing for the pledge of allegiance.
The pledge of allegiance is to the Father, the United States of America, to the public, who stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Townsend, would you mind leading us in the community prayer?
My pleasure. Almighty God, humbly we pray your blessing as we concern our life with the opportunity to serve our community. Enhance us with your spirit of dignity and selflessness. May we become instruments of support and understanding as we seek to bring an environment of trust and purpose among all who provide the many services that make us all that we can become. Help us achieve the goals of our commitment in this office that is now our responsibility. And especially, we lift our prayers for all the citizens of our community that we have been allowed to serve, that they may discover the fullness and joy of life that we all seek, and keep those serving in our armed forces, in our first responders, in our hearts and thoughts. Amen.
Thank you, Mr. Townsend. Good evening, everyone. Next item on our agenda, or actually the only item on our agenda, is to finish off the 2026 budget process. And if I recall correctly, there were some requests made by the board that the Finance Director--
John, do you need these guys to call any--
Oh, sorry, yes.
This is a joint meeting, right?
Joint meeting, yeah, sorry.
Okay. So--
Call your meeting order.
So, March 6th, joint meeting with the Select Board to complete the budget discussion, and we call the meeting to order.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Cannon, do you want to take us to the next step?
Sure, you know, I might just turn it right over. I could give you a quick recap. At our last meeting, the board, with a good set of eyes, found a copier lease agreement that was between the town and the school, and really should be separated out. It is my understanding, as we move into FY '26, that the school will have a separate copier lease budget for their own, and that this lease agreement was a joint between the school and the town that's ending at the end of fiscal year '25. So, again, that freed up some money. There was a request, not a formal request, but a request for to fund a police officer for half a year. I think the Finance Director is going to walk us through how that works and those steps to get there.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Mr. Chair, so there were some questions that were asked previously at the last meeting in the IT budget, and I can explain on what page.
I think it's a little bit difficult. I found the IT in tab four, section one, and I think you probably have to dig through it up. Yeah, there it is. Yeah, page nine, if you can--
Page nine.
Yep, ma'am. I have it. Now it's the Treasurer Select.
You should have a new-- you should have--
They're putting it into--
Okay.
Okay.
So, everybody should have received three new pages with three-hole punch. On the top, it says FY '26 Budget Request Updated 3/6. The three departments that were updated today were the Town Administrator's Budget, Select Board, the Select Board's Budget, IT, and the Police Department. If you need those three pages that are going to be replaced, if you don't have them, if you can't find them, I have copies.
Thank you. I didn't see that part of it. Thank you.
So, formerly, the IT had $81,000 in their budget, and that was for the copier lease contract. That copier lease contract is with Kenmark, and that did include the school's portion. The school's portion is $57,000, and they have that $57,000 budgeted in their budget for a copier lease. Kenmark copy, the Kenmark lease is going to be expiring, so for FY '26, they're going to be using a completely different lease. So, our budget had, the IT budget, the line for the $81,000 has decreased by the, by $57,000 for the portion that we're paying for our lease. So, now, the IT--
It went from 81 down to 24?
That's correct. Yes. And another question that was asked was regarding soft write. Soft write, we have a bill where $8,000 is paid by the town, and $15,000 for soft write is paid by the school department, and that is in their budget. The total is $37,000 for soft write. The town pays for $8,000. There's archival information that we currently use for the town, and the school has $14,000. That came out of, that was part of the computer software VEDAR line of the 185-123.
So, no change to that?
No change.
If the school has a portion, why wouldn't that drop by the school portion?
Well, it's not, the school portion is not included in that 185 number.
She just has the nine hours.
Oh, because we mentioned the other night it was 37 total, but you're saying it's not included in the--
Right, so John Neely has a list of several different items that make up that 185, and so as we're going through that, it, that portion, and we were looking at all the other ones, that portion is not, is not included in this budget here.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question.
And just, and just so you know that this, John's IT, John's computer software line was reduced, his original request was $227,000, and as we were going through, you know, some of the items, I felt that that number was on the higher side, you know, as I was looking at things. And so, when we were working together, I had that reduced to 185-123, just based off of, you know, just previous contracts. And so, that's the number that I felt would be comfortable using, but he did have a larger request in his budget for the computer software.
That was my question.
I'm sorry.
Okay, that answered. Good, thank you.
Welcome. So, what we did was, we reduced the IT budget by $57,000, and we increased, if you look at the police budget, that's on page-- that's on page 17.
I have it in tab four, section two, page 17. It's a little difficult to find these, but--
And we were going to fund the police officer for half a year, and that would have cost $45,000. So, from the $57,000, 45 was moved to the police department's budget, and we had $12,000 that was moved to the Select Board budget. If you go to page two, and that was under the project, project management. So, the project management line was originally $25,000 in the Select Board's budget, and that's now increased by $12,000 to $37,000. So, that's how we allocated the 57.
Can you just say, what was the $12,000 for?
The $12,000 went into the project management line item in the Select Board's budget.
And what is it for?
So, many times, it's for projects that we do see come up with throughout the year that we really don't anticipate. I know last year, it was the 21E for the property on Fosdick Road. It was, I'm sorry, I'm drawing a blank right now on the second one. I'm sorry, yes, the Lakeview Street Summit, if you remember that. We had the, kind of the three properties separately, the Recreation, Problem Conservation in COA, where they built the pickleball court. Really hadn't had a comprehensive look at that, so that's moved forward. The result of that, we're bringing forward a $200,000 capital request to repave that, and then they do have some money to fix it up. I know going into fiscal year '29, I have a meeting Monday morning on, and again, it's these unforeseen things, pickleball. We're going to review the budget on pickleball, see where they stand on that one. So, a little bit of a concern there. So, it's those types of projects that are, again, just truly unforeseen, that do come out throughout the year, you know?
Can I ask one more?
Sure, Kim, go ahead.
All right, so, I want the police to get this extra position, but I just want to make sure we have enough money covered. I feel like sometimes when you add another position, you also need to make sure you have enough in your health insurance reserve or any fringe benefits. Is there enough in those line items to cover this additional position?
Yes, it is. So, for our health insurance, we have, you know, just looking at our current year bills and looking at what we spend, it's very, very fluctuates. Sometimes it could be $450,000, you know, a month as we're paying it, to less than that. But I think that we have sufficient funds within our healthcare line to cover that position.
And for all the other fringe--
And for all the other fringe benefits, that's correct.
Okay.
I guess just following up on, following up on that is, it's the salary, it's the benefits, but it's also equipment and everything else, that's, that's all. We've got it budgeted, I guess, is what we're saying. Anything the police officer needs.
Well, within the police budget, they have allocated, I mean, they have different information, they have different lines for their equipment and their expenses outside of the salary. I mean, I could have the, the police chief go through those expenses in terms of that extra, having that extra police officer, if that's what you're looking for. But in terms of the benefits, we have--
If, if you're happy, and obviously the police chief's, you know, reviewed and said we're covered, then I'm good.
I was just wondering if that $12,000 should have went somewhere to the police budget to cover anything else out of the position.
Not that I'm thinking of right now. I mean, if the police chief feels that having this additional position would require $12,000 in additional, if there's different police gear or different things that they would need, I mean, I could ask him, and that $12,000 could go, you know, could be split anywhere you want, where you would like to have it go. But in terms of the benefits, I think we have sufficient funds in our budget to cover the benefit section.
Okay.
Would you like to say anything? It would make sense that you give it the final review.
So, thank you. I've never actually had to say no to more money. I appreciate it. We certainly use the money, but no, I think we're, the $45,000 will cover the salaries. We have a line built into our operational budget that covers the expenses for new hires. We have, based on potential retirements for next year, we have built that, that line up a little bit, so we're covered for that, so we should be all set.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
So, I guess with that, I'd open up any questions by the Finance Committee? No? Anything from the board?
So, I guess-- Are we talking about this item or any item?
I was referring to this item, but if you've got questions on any other items, feel free, while we're here.
Well, the only question I have is, are we, I don't think on Tuesday night, we reviewed the North Caver Water District budget. Are we planning on spending any time reviewing the North Caver Water District budget?
Mr. Cannon?
We, we do plan on doing that. We'll do it when we bring forward the article for the North Caver Water District. Karen and I have a meeting next Wednesday with them to go over their budget with them. Let's see, I, we believe there needs to be significant changes to their budget. If you do look, and I know we're on this one stage right now, one thing you'll see in the next thing, we talk about free cash, there are subsidies to the North Caver Water District. That's where our play comes into that. We're maintaining that, the $200,000, I believe it was $168 last year, but it's always been in this $200,000 range, so we're maintaining to stay in that same range, not a significant increase.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Ryan?
So, the net now total budget that we had the other night, the $52,283,4, I guess 51 or whatever it was, that, that's still the same?
That's still the same. So, the total, yeah, the total operating budget is $52,283,431, and that includes the town. The town was $26,880,163. This includes the EMS and the cemetery, so as you look at the total budget, and the town's budget was $25,403,268, bringing in the total of the 52,283,431, which is part of your budget summary comparison, that the number did not change.
Mr. Harrow, you have a question?
As long as the North Caver Water District was brought up, I would like to make a comment or two on it, okay? The North Caver Water District did a presentation to the FinCom last week, okay? And it was before they voted their budget. I don't know if they have voted their budget or not, but we have, they could not come up with a solid number. They could not, they didn't have a comprehensive plan of how they would, they would carry things out, and basically really couldn't answer some questions.
I guess just a quick point, is this within the scope of what we're talking about tonight since we're going to be discussing their article? I don't know if you posted this as an agenda topic, is it within our, can we talk about this?
Well, it's a part of, it's not part of the 2026 budget?
Oh, yeah.
So, you missed a chair. It is through free cash appropriation. So, as part of the free cash appropriation, we have $200,000. I put $200,000 in as a suggested transfer to cover the subsidy of the North Caver Water District. I have concerns for the North Caver Water District just due to their user fees that have been really low. We, you know, we haven't collected the amount that we actually bill. We, North Caver Water District in the past had a, had a reserved stabilization fund, and $230,000 had been used from that stabilization fund to help offset this particular budget. That has $65,000 in it right now. So, as I look at the revenue for North Caver Water District, just in terms of--
You know, Mr. Chairman, if I could, I think we're--
Yeah, well, we're, I think what Mr. Ryan was saying is that, that there'll be a full discussion on the North Caver Water District budget. We really shouldn't get into it now until the numbers have been presented.
Okay.
Right, because I wasn't sure--
My apologies. Strike that from the record, please.
We posted a meeting for tonight, and I wasn't sure if it fell within what we posted tonight, so I just want to be careful.
But we can go over, as part of allocated funds, the second page, well, the other page of your report where you want to put the reserves and things like that is a valid discussion point, I think.
Mr. Chairman, I would just make a point that I think we're, what we posted tonight was a discussion of the general budget, and I do think it would be valid for the Select Board to hear the Finance Committee's comments on the North Caver Water District. They did meet with them, and they did go over their budget. I don't think, unless they, you have another joint meeting planned for next week, but I, I would like to hear their comments on the North Caver Water District budget, and I don't, I don't think that's outside the purview of the--
I'm fine, I just was checking on it. I mean, if it's--
Okay, just be a few minutes.
Why don't you just give a summary level of, you know, highlight your concerns?
Yeah, I'm going, but it, but the point was, is the, the budget presentation was certainly lacked facts. It lacked confidence. It provided no confidence to us. We have, I'm going to just make a couple of analogies here. We have, we have a, an entity called the North Caver Water District that is looking at about $1.4 million, and they really couldn't define a lot of those things, but we got to do it. The chair, and this is nothing personal, the chairperson indicated that he has no knowledge of water, no knowledge of finances, but we have to do all these things. And there was a whole litany of things that we still have to do but haven't been cost out yet or whatever, and those were, I don't know, several hundred thousand dollars. So, we're looking at maybe $2 million or more, and my problem, my biggest problem with that is the organizational structure of the North Caver Water District. It's a three-member board with no experience, with the point person admittedly--
Yeah, I don't, I feel really uncomfortable where we're going with this.
Yeah, I would agree, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, fine.
I, I think that when we talk about it at a, at a meeting, we could, you know--
Okay, well, that was my shot, but--
But let me ask you this, did the Finance Committee vote on the budget at all?
On their budget?
On their budget, they presented it to you.
We have not voted on--
You didn't tell you had sufficient information?
We haven't voted on their budget, no.
Okay, okay.
No.
Fair enough.
And I don't know what the vote's going to be, but there's, there's, there's a lot of issues there.
Okay. All right. All right. So--
Sorry.
Did the Finance Committee come back?
I don't know what you mean. I mean, later chat.
Meanwhile, we're going to have the police chief explain all the details of the difference between free cash and allocation, where he wants to put it.
I'll give you a shot. Whatever you want. I can help you choose, too.
All right, so, again, I want to thank everybody for their patience in getting through this thing, and it seems like we've got, I don't know, a fairly robust budget that covers a lot of the services that we want to provide to the taxpayers, and even adding some, which is a great spot to be in versus a lot of other towns have to go and go through their budgets and start making cuts on, on various departments and things like that. So, it's, it's a positive effect for the town. I, I think the Finance Director is going to want to go over and talk about some other allocations that she wants to make.
Okay. And then a quick question, do we have a, do we have the revenue picture? I was going to look for in the, one of the handouts, does it all add up to the total amount that we're allocating? Do we have that page up, or is it?
Is there a summary page of the revenue that ties to the $52,283,431, which is the expenses that we're going to approve tonight?
It should be-- Oh, yeah. I think, okay, it is. So, it is on tab one, I think, at the beginning.
Yeah.
So--
Yeah.
We haven't gone through that in any detail. I don't know if you wanted to chat about--
Well, I thought we went through it, we did go through a fair amount of it the other night.
I thought you did.
Did you have a specific question on the revenue component? Any revenue item?
There's a deduction for a pilot agreement revenue, maybe--
For the $97,000?
Yeah, what was that?
I'll defer to the Finance Director. Could you explain the $97,000 reduction for, I believe it's the solar revenue?
Yes. So, when we, when we had our, when we met to go over our financial policies, there were solar meter revenue that, agreements that began July 1st, 2024, that the Select Board did not want to use towards the operating budget. So, that amount was removed while we were doing the split to determine how much the town and the school could receive for revenue. That revenue is still available, so as I go through our free cash appropriation, that 97 is included in that revenue portion because we have not signed any expenses for that.
So, that's a new policy, Dan, just enacted this year. This is the first time you've seen it.
Okay. And then I think the other question was the overlay. You were going to modify the overlay, and is that reflected in the updated revenue picture?
So, that's not part of the revenue?
Right.
This is, I'm going to hand out a spreadsheet. When, yesterday, last night, our free cash certification came through from the Department of Revenue, and so I was, I was meeting with Glenn today, we were talking about how you were going to, what money we were going to transfer, because from the financial policies, the $97,000 plus anything from free cash was going to be used to fund capital projects and any transfers. We still have our non-appropriate expenditures, which is your state aid assessments, which we had already subtracted. When we do the, when we did the split, we subtracted the net, the state aid assessments to determine the split, but as you look at the entire budget, you're still looking at your total revenue and your total expenditures. So, as we go through the transfers, I'm going to pass on another sheet. There's a sheet that was passed up, but that was just a sheet I was using as a practice sheet with the town administrator, I was looking at transfers, because depending on how, what money you want to put into the different pockets, I can kind of go through that. But there is a section where I have set aside, we usually put 250 for the overlay. I've increased that, and I'm going to pass this sheet around, which shows that of 375. And the reason I increased the overlay, one, was because we have new exemptions for the veterans, and I believe, you know, working with the assessor, there could be more abatements for Cranberry, Cranberry Village. And so, I wanted to make sure that we had enough. We still have a balance in our allowance for abatements, around like $1.4 million, but it's just, you know, with DOR, they want to make sure that, you know, every town is still putting aside some, because with the allowance, it's not that, it depends on if it's abated. I mean, you may have people that abate properties. I hope I'm explaining this in a way that people understand it. You know, people are billed, they pay their bills, and if they feel like their bill is too high, they may submit a, an abatement letter asking, you know, to have their, their bill reduced. And so, what we do is, so that we don't lose a revenue, we already put aside revenue on the side through our allowance for abatement to cover any reductions so that we still get our entire tax base. Hope that explains that. But I'm going to go through--
And would you say the, the current balance is a million what?
It's around $1.4 million. As of June, it was $1.4.
And is that a target number you like? Is that what you want it to be at?
I mean, that's determined by Department of Revenue. I would, I would have to go through and just go through like a whole exercise on how we do the overlay, how that overlay is determined, and how that affects the taxes, it's a lot.
I'd say it's dictated towards by the state, so it is a number we're very comfortable with, because they virtually tell us what the number should be. They will give you the details of it, but that's the way I understand it, is they, they actually tell us what the number will be, and we put it in the budget.
And they've been comfortable with what we've been, you know, putting aside in our budget. You know, DOR met with us over the summer, and they, you know, went, they walked through our entire warrant, and, you know, saw what we had, and, you know, based off what's being abated, and what we have as a, as a balance, that I believe we're fine for our overlay. But you have to make sure that you have money set aside to cover that.
Great.
Would you like me to pa, oh--
Sure. Do you have a question?
I think I'll wait till--
Okay.
That gets passed out. Still trying to look at the factor of how the overlay plays into this, but--
Just enough.
Maybe.
Everyone gets one except the chairman.
It's kind of a committed memory.
This is exactly the same as this.
Almost, it's a little different.
Can I give everybody else a second?
So, as an exercise for this, what I did was, I took, I took the amount of our free cash, which was the $3,359,18, and I had to add the $97,000 in, you know, in addition, because that's money, that's revenue that we have that has not been allocated to anything, and that the, that's for the pilot revenue. So, $97,861 plus the $3,359,18 comes to $3,448,779. What I did from that, and that's the total revenue that we now have available that we can use based off of how we had our financial statements to be, to use towards capital and to put into different pots of money for stabilization. From that number, I subtracted the $375,000, which is covering overlay. I subtracted $1.3 million, which is covering our capital projects, leaving a balance of $1,773,779 that we can allocate to different pots of money that the town was interested in. The first area, and just going back to the financial policies, well, I had the North Caver Water-- Well, I had the North Carver Water District Subsea of $200,000. The next one I had was the Stabilization Fund, and for the Stabilization Fund, I had allocated 300,000 because our policy, which is Policy Number Four, requires the town to have 7%, of our total revenue in that fund at all times. Right now, we're around 3 point, around 3.5 million dollars and change, and so we should have 3.8, 3,876,063. 300 brings us over the 7%, but I just wanted to do it to round, to have round numbers. So that will, that satisfies the amount that our policies state, you know, and through, you know, Hilltop and our rating agencies, that we should really have as a balance in that fund at all times.
Which stabilization fund is that one?
This is just our regular, the regular stabilization fund. And then for our Capital Debt Stabilization Fund, this is the stabilization fund that we would be using to cover, you know, larger capital projects in the future. We currently have around $600,000 in the Capital Debt Stabilization Fund. And so as I was looking at the ladder truck, and I was just taking the ladder truck, subtracting what we currently have in the fund, dividing it by three years, you know, if we are putting $600 every year into the Capital Debt Stabilization Fund, then that would allow us, you know, in three years, if you didn't want to issue bonds and you wanted to pay for the ladder upfront, you would have money in that fund saved up to cover that. So I just, I could put 600, you know, at any point, it's up to you and how you want to have this money allocated. These are just, just suggestions.
And we had zero in it, so with this, if this is the allocation that the board decides to go with, we start off with a $600,000 balance. I thought you said there was 600 in it already.
There is, there's 600 in that account right now.
Already?
Yes.
I, I don't recall voting, I don't recall that.
It could have been in there for years, I mean, but the balance sheet, a lot of these, oh, excuse me, a lot of these stabilization funds and trust funds have balances in it that you might not see because it's on the balance sheet. It's not something that, it's not like it's an appropriation. I mean, you have appropriations during the years where you're transferring money, that money sits there until the town votes to use it. So if they don't really use it, that balance stays there, so right now, the balance is around 600, like, I think it was like 650,000, I think I have that here with me.
Do you have any questions? Okay. Anybody else, questions?
Yeah, I'm still confused. So the 3,559, that's called non-appropriate expenses. So we have our total budget of 52,283,431, and then we have this non-appropriated 3, 3,559. How is that being accounted for? That's what I'm, is that, you said free cash transfer summary, is that, you, how, how are we accounting for having to pay for those items?
So the state aid assessments have already been deducted from our revenue, our state aid revenue, as we were doing our regular, so when you look at the budget of the 52,283,431, if you go to page, if you go to tab two,
Okay.
and you look at our revenue town split, you can see that our tax levy was 35,619. Our state aid was 14,171. We subtracted our assessments, which is the 2,625,559.
And that covers the, the state aid assessments?
That's correct.
And the 1, the 1,984,5, okay, so then the 375?
That's overlay, that's not accounted for.
It's not accounted for.
But it's, we don't appropriate that.
Okay, I'm still confused on that, but maybe I'll, we'll figure that out later.
But you still need to, as you're balancing your budget and as you look at the budget for last year, I think there may be some confusions of overlay because in the past, you've put it as a shared cost. In the past, I've seen some budgets where it's just been as another cost. You've never, you never transfer money into overlay because it's not an actual appropriation. It's a net amount that through the accounting exercise through DOR will just net the total amount that we have.
So the past practice before, similar to what you would have done here, is so if you had said, this is how much we can raise in taxes, so here's the prior year levy limit, the amended new growth, the new growth, so we have a total of 34,583,441. What we would have done in the past is we would have said, except, we're gonna reserve $375,000 that we're not going to count as an appropriation, so we would just subtract that off at that point in time, saying that we're putting that, we're saying we're not gonna collect, that's, that's money we may never collect, the 375,000, so we're not gonna appropriate the covering that cost. Do you know what I mean? So we would, the past practice of the town was, let's take all the money we can raise in taxes, take off the overlay because that's money we wouldn't collect because we're reserving it, and use the balance of that for the appropriations.
Okay, I understand what you're saying.
Now we're using the full amount of the appropriations.
Well, it's not an appropriation. At first, it's not an appropriation, and we have, the state requires us to have a certain amount of overlay set aside. So we have, we have balances of overlay, I'm trying to think how I can explain this.
I'm not, I'm not saying it's an appropriation, I'm saying by subtracting it off of the, taking it off of the total tax levy that we, we have, if you subtract it off, you wouldn't be appropriating anything, you're just subtracting it because you don't have that money. You're assuming that money doesn't exist, so.
Okay, so you're saying that has been a past practice that from the tax levy, you subtract your allowance for abatement off the tax levy before you do the split, or as a part of the split?
Yeah, before we appropriate any money. So if we're appropriating money into, if we're appropriating money into all these accounts, we would assume we don't have that 375, it just doesn't exist. So we would have subtracted that off and said we can appropriate up to the 35,619 less the 375.
Okay, I understand, I understand what you're saying.
So we never appropriated it, we just assumed it didn't exist.
Okay, I understand what you're saying, similar to how you do the state aid. So I think that, you know, as a past practice, that's something we can definitely look into and figure out how we want to move forward doing that now, because if you're looking at your budgets, if you want to apply that to the taxes, we didn't do that last year, and I haven't seen that in the previous year where the overlay is taken out of your revenue base when you do the split out of the taxes, because then you would have had, if that were the case, every spreadsheet we would have had would have shown our tax levy, our debt exclusion, our total tax levy, and then you would have had a line for overlay. I have never seen that.
I think the trick they did is when they created this shared cost, like you said, they ended up dumping it into potentially the shared cost to show that it didn't exist, you couldn't appropriate it for anything. So you couldn't appropriate to the school or the town, it just doesn't exist. So I think they netted it out as a shared cost, which probably wasn't the right thing to do, but it was money that wasn't accounted for. So when you go to do your recap, you know, with the state, you have to, that amount goes in there, and you still have to have a balanced budget. So in the end, that was my question, is how does it, how does it balance out in the end? Because you're gonna have to show something in the accounting that says that we had that overlay, and where's the money coming from?
So the overlay is already accounted for by DOR when we do our tax, when we set our tax rate from the very beginning.
Okay.
So the overlay, like last year for FY '24, within the tax rate, because this is done before you even set your budget, was around $400,000, and these are things that are set within the tax recap with DOR. This is a long exercise that goes into this. This year of FY '25, it's at 605,000, but that's the amount that we work off of as we're doing the whole taxes. It's a, it's, to go through that, I think it's gonna be, I would prefer it to be to have time to walk everyone through because it can be very confusing, and I understand how you're saying, you know, take it off the taxes. I know it has been part of the shared cost in the past. Usually, what you do is you want to make sure that anything you have for your undesigned fund balance, it's, it's not an actual appropriation, it's not an actual expense, that we would make sure that our undesigned fund balance, we have set aside $375,000 out of our undesigned fund balance to cover that, because it wouldn't be a free cash transfer, because you don't do free cash transfers for something that's gonna be offset. So what, you know, done in the past is that it's an amount from your undesigned fund balance that you set aside, so you're not using it just in case, you know, you do have those abatements. Another thing that happens is that if you have an excess amount of overlay at the end of the fiscal year, based off of what you've billed and what your receivables are, you can go back to the assessors, the town administrator can go to the assessors to have that overlay excess put into, you know, surplus overlay account, and when you close the books at the end of the year, you can just close it out to free cash, so it then comes back. But I have subtracted it from our total free cash amount so that we don't transfer more than, so we still have money available to cover the overlay.
I see, so we're kind of treating it as a free cash, money being used to cover a possible overlay versus just reducing the amount of money the town spends by, by that amount. That's, that's how you're balancing it, that's what I was.
Yes.
So I think the correct way to do it potentially going forward is to, we just assume we don't have that money. So you just appropriate less money because you assume you're gonna not collect that in taxes. So if you don't collect $375,000 in taxes, you can't appropriate up to that max, so you should just pull it off.
Well, it's money that we set aside, not so much that we're not going to collect it, we have collected the money. But if somebody states, okay, they've paid their bill, and that they say that, I feel my bill is too high and I should have paid less, then we have money set aside that, so that our money that we've already allocated to our tax revenue is in decrease. So it's not like, okay, somebody paid a bill for 100,000, and then they wanted $10,000 back. And then when you look at the taxes, it's more than what happens this fiscal year, because a lot of times people don't pay. We send bills out for, you know, for FY '25, but some of the taxes that we received are taxes that were from '24, '23, '22. When you look at our free cash number and you say, wow, it's really, it's so much higher than last year. Why is that? The free cash number is calculated based off of revenue that we projected, that we brought in more. So for this particular year, we brought in around $1 million more in local receipts. There were some permits that were higher than we originally projected, and sometimes you have revenue for your taxes where people may have missed years. And so they're paying those years, you know, within that fiscal year, but then it's less than, we'll say, we have our levy for 35 million right now for the taxes, but sometimes people may have paid their taxes, didn't pay their taxes a couple of years ago, or three or four years ago, so that may come in, it may come in at 37 million instead of 35. So then the overlay has nothing, it's not gonna do anything other than stay within your undesigned fund balance. But I would love to talk about this more, in more detail.
I think we should look at that for next year to come up with a standard policy versus doing it two different ways.
Yeah, because there's a lot that goes into it, especially as you go to set your tax rate, and how DOR looks at the overlay.
Okay. All right, so did you want to walk us through these other items?
So moving on, I had compensated absences, and that had $150,000 in that account. The next was the public safety radio. So the fire chief has $50,000 every year for this emergency safety radio. And each year, he likes to have a balance, they've always held, had a balance of 50,000, and if he used 10,000, he always wanted to replenish it. So this year, replenishing 7,344. We talked about this because in the past, it's been a continuing appropriation, and then as the town transfers free cash, it goes into another fund to cover this, but he's looking for 7,000 so that he has the 50,000 available if something were to come up. And that changes each year. I had $150,000 for the Unemployment Reserve Fund. And the, we had 100,000 for the Special Ed Reserve, and this is for, you know, for the school department, and they have a reserve fund right now, if things come up with children needing special ed, there seems to be an increase in special ed needs. So I had 100,000 that we discussed during the policy meeting. We have 9,000, and this is for the operations and maintenance of a catch basin. So as you have the dirt and silt and everything that, that goes to the DPV yard, and then you have a contractor comes and picks that up for our catch basins. So there's $9,000, this is not done every year, but this is a cost that they have. And then we have, I spelt that incorrectly, OPEB. And I had 257,435, you know, there was some, you know, a little extra. So I thought that, you know, anything, any time that we can, you know, reduce our OPEB liability and show that we're, you know, constantly funding it, we put 225 in it last year, and I think that each year, we should, you know, continue to make sure that this month, this, this is funded so that when, we still have a huge liability that we'll always have, but the rating agencies are always make, looking for and making sure that towns are aware that, that we have this liability, and they're setting money aside for it. So that's how I had a breakdown of the available free cash. And as you can see, the total that would be available for funds would be the 1,773,779, because that also included the 97,861 that we set aside from the pilot revenue.
So if I could just reiterate really four categories. You're, you're taking the free cash of the 3,350 plus the $97,000 from solar, where you're getting your 3.4 million dollars. And where are you gonna spend that? You're gonna spend that in three items. The 375 for the overlay, the 17 for the budget transfers, and 1.3 for capital.
That's correct.
Sorry, any questions, anybody else, any questions?
I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
Is that okay?
Yep.
Should I wait till, are we gonna go through each one? Or should I just ask?
I, I think that, you know, you just asked your question.
All right, I had a couple. So on the Capital Debt Stabilization, I'm happy we have the 600, but I feel like we've been asking if there was a balance, and I know we asked last year, so can we just double check that there's really 600,000?
Oh, yes, I believe I have that sheet here, and I can tell you what's in them.
Okay.
So out of our.
But she's transferring 600,000 in.
Yeah, she's saying there was.
And she's, she's already got 600,000 in there.
Yeah, so it'll be a million too.
True.
I feel like you've been asking, and supposedly there was nothing there.
No, there are, there are a lot of, you have a lot of stabilization funds, you have a lot of reserve funds, revolving funds. We finally closed the budget in there, some of the balances you weren't able, you, you didn't have because of the transfer between, well, I don't know what happened before me, between the transfer of Softright and Vadar. But I can tell you what the balances are, these have been approved, they, we looked at the prior balances from last year, any transactions, if there were transfers in, transfers out. So the ending balance in the Capital Debt Stabilization Fund is 654,101,37. And I can provide everyone an updated sheet of all of our balances and our trust funds and the revolving funds. I think it's something that you, you should see. So what I did was I took that amount, and just thinking about the ladder and thinking about how we want to use the funds, how much we would really need to put aside each year over the next three years to be able to fund the ladder. And you, or it's up to you, you could put more in if you want, because there may be other things that come up later in the year, but I thought that would at least allow us to start saving.
Okay, so my next question is on the Unemployment Reserve Fund. So I feel like we've talked a lot about unemployment, how much do we have now in total? I know there's an old capital article that has a balance, there's something in the operating budget, and now we're building another reserve fund. So just wondering, in total?
So for unemployment, we have a, we were asking for $80,000 in FY '25, and we have around 25,000 remaining in unemployment. Our unemployment, excuse me, our unemployment cost running anywhere between 100,000 to 112,000 a year. I mean, it could change if people aren't filing, but I've seen it increase as you go back over the few years. You're not going to see that amount within your actual budget sheet because there had been a continuing appropriation that was used to supplement any additional expenses.
But we also have the 54,000 from the 2017 article. So is it 54 plus 80 plus 150?
That's correct. So it's the, it's the fif, so 54, excuse me, so we have the 54 continuing appropriation.
I'm just thinking like, you know, we were talking about not closing that article, but could we close it if we're gonna put 150,000 in here?
So one thing you, one thing to think about is that as we're putting money into these stabilization funds, they can't be touched. So you'd have to go back to town meeting to have a special town meeting if you wanted to transfer money from a stabilization fund to offset your budget.
So this is a stabilization fund, not a reserve?
Well, well, this would be a reserve fund, but it's not something that we could touch unless we came back to town meeting to, to use the money.
Well, could you deficit, could you deficit spend and then ask for reallocation at town meeting as, as just a transfer from the reserve fund?
If you deficit spend in the operating budget, you would have to request a transfer prior to the end of the fiscal year before July 15th. And that would either, if we ran a shortfall of 30,000, 40,000, I would come to the Finance Committee and ask for a transfer to cover that deficit. So what would happen, so when you have it in the reserve fund, we'll say we put money into reserve fund this year. Next year, as we're doing our budget, this becomes a revenue source, becomes a source of revenue. So if you didn't want to have it come from the taxes, you could say, well, I want to use 20,000 or 40,000, or maybe I want to have a budget of 80,000, I want to use 30,000 of revenue from the Unemployment Reserve Fund. And then that would reduce, similar to like what we're doing. And then that would reduce, similar to like what we're doing to reduce the debt exclusion, we're using 100,000 from the SOLA net metering. It's a revenue source. So any money that you put into a trust fund or a reserve fund, it's a revenue source. And so that you'd use that revenue source to offset your budget in the next, in the future years if you didn't have enough revenue, if you, you know, through taxes.
So let me just... I'm just saying, let's look at real life. God forbid there's a big layoff and there's unemployment. Right? You're going to pay for unemployment first. You're going to hit the 80,000 in the operating budget, right?
That's correct.
All right. And then if you were, could you then, you couldn't do anything with this money we're putting in the state, this reserve fund. You couldn't touch that.
Couldn't touch that. You'd have to request...
You could go to the 57, 54,000 in the ATM warrant article if you had to.
That's correct, yes.
Okay. And then if it went through that, you'd have to go to the finance committee reserve fund.
Yes, so there's plenty of money, I think, for...
It just seems like we should get a better way of grouping them together.
Or you could just have a, have an unemployment within your budget. And then depending on what it is, that's just the number.
All right, then I have one more question.
Then you could evaluate that each year.
So my last question was on the special education reserve fund. I know over the summer when we met on financial policies, they said they almost had 600,000, and they could maybe release some of that if they had to. So do they need another 100,000? And would this be the same situation where they would have to go to town meeting next year to even use it?
It depends on how the, it depends on how the account is set up. I want to look into that for you, but I know there's around 500,000 in that account now. I think that, you know, any amount, whether it's 50,000 or it's 40,000 or anything can help because you never know what the needs are going to be later. But I'll find out the spending requirements, if that's something that they can spend. I think it may be, but I'll double check.
That was all. I just had those questions because...
Anybody else? All right. I just got one pretty basic and just on the subsidy to the North Carver Water District. For many, many years on the finance committee, it was 250 every year, 250 every year out of free cash. Is, is, what is the, and I assume that was the debt payment for the North Carver Water District. But it sounds like it was that in other items. Like what's the debt payment for the North Carver Water District?
The debt payment for North Carver is 231,000 and some change. I can tell you the exact number.
That's okay. I don't know the exact number. So it's 230.
So what happened was you had a capital in debt, you had a water stabilization fund. And from the water stabilization fund, 231,000, which covers your debt, was transferred to North Carver Water District to cover those fees plus retained earnings. So what happened was you had the stable, you had a water stabilization fund. You used that as revenue source to cover North Carver. When North Carver, the meters were working well and money was coming in through your user fees, you had retained earnings, which is similar to your free cash. And so every year, we've been using about 200,000 of retained earnings. The only reason why this enterprise has retained earnings, which you wouldn't have, is because they covered the revenue through this water stabilization fund that must have had a significant amount of money in it over the years that they reserved and that they use that to cover. But right now, there, for North Carver Water District, they're, you know, bringing in not even half of their user fees. And so we have about 65,000 left in that water stabilization fund. I then have the 200,000 in the subsidy. And then we have some money that comes in from the federal government. So base, so the total revenue that I'm projecting coming in, including the 200, is 650,000. The budget last year for North Carver Water District was 636. And we haven't met that revenue base yet. I'm still waiting. We just, we did some billing. So I'm just constantly looking at that to see where we're going to end up at the end of the fiscal year. Because this year will be the last year we have retained earnings. We have 195,000 in retained earnings. And that may be reduced depending on what happens in FY '25.
Any other questions? Any members of the board?
One quick question, Ms. Provost. Just back to the North Carver subsidy. They have plenty of money this year to cover their debt payment. There's no issues.
Oh, no, the debt payments are fine.
Great. All right, Mr. Cannon, I defer to you. Would you like us to, I know, I know these items will be fed into the warrant article. Would you like a vote by the board tonight on the overall budget?
Yes, we would prefer, yes, we'd like to have a vote on the overall budget tonight.
I'll make a motion to recommend the budget as presented.
And let's just mention that number. I got a lot of sheets here, so could someone give me that number?
What is that number?
The operating budget, the operating budget is 52,283,431.
I'm sorry, I misspoke. Before we go further, I think maybe the finance committee should vote first just so we can get it right.
Don't we make a motion?
So we want to recommend a budget. Can we have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to recommend the budget as stated by Karen for 52 million.
52,283,431.
Thank you. I'm right down.
Okay. Motion and second?
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Again, I'll make a motion to recommend the budget as presented by Ms. Provost.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other questions, issues or concerns? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, zero, three, zero. So now do we need also a secondary vote on?
Free cash?
I think it's, we're voting on the 3.4 million, which is...
Are we?
Is it, is it, what would you like the vote to be on? I know we've got different numbers. Is it on, we already voted the 97, or did we?
You didn't vote the 97 because the 97 is not included in that budget because the revenue for the town budget doesn't include the 97. So what you'd be voting is the free cash plus your raising appropriate of the 97, 861. Let me just, give me one second. I'll just add this up.
Karen, is that the 3,448,779?
Yeah, but we already, did we already vote on the 1.3, which was capital the other night?
You voted on the 1, oh, so I think what, I think what you should do is, we have the free cash amount of the 3,359,8. When you add the 97, 861, that covers the rest of your revenue for your entire budget. So the 3,448,779, you'd be voting 1.3 for your capital projects because this is all coming, part of it's coming from, so part of it's coming from free cash. 3,359,18 is coming from free cash. And then you're also authorizing voting the 97, 861 because it's revenue that you haven't allocated because that money is being used to go into your stabilization funds. So what you, so what you haven't, you voted your budget based off of our revenue minus the 97. So what you now have to vote is your free cash, which is a 3,359,18, plus the projects that cover the 97, 861. So the total amount that you have left to cover your capital projects and your transfers is 3,448,779.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
When we make the vote, should we take off the 1.3 million because we've already voted capital? And make it 2,348,779?
Yes, so the, you would, because you already voted the, excuse me, because you already voted the 1.3, you would take that off. You would not take off the 375 because that's a non-appropriation. The 375 is a non-appropriate in expense. And so the amount that you have left is the 1,773,779 because that's what you'd be voting tonight.
All right, I'm going to do this in three pieces. Let's just try one. Would anyone like to vote, vote to approve, I guess I'll throw this up to the finance committee, go first. Vote to approve the total budget transfers amount of 1,773,779. Can we do that first?
Okay. So we have a...
Second.
Okay, so Bill moved it. Beth seconded. Further discussion on that one? Okay, all those in favor on the finance committee?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion to recommend.
We have a motion to recommend 1,773,779 to approve for budget transfers. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, three, zero. Okay, so now since we already voted the 1.3, aren't we just voting on the overlay of 375?
No, that doesn't get appropriated.
No.
Okay, so you're good?
So what you're voting on is the 1,773,779.
Which we just did.
That's correct.
What about the 97, 861?
That's part of that number. I've included it.
That was in there?
Yeah, that's included in there.
Yes. Because you vote on your expenses and then I put the revenue together.
So you're good?
Yes.
You're good?
Have we done voting?
I'm good.
Everybody's good. All right. Any other issues? I guess I'd offer the finance committee, oh, do you have a question? Oh, yes, 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 I forgot. You can talk about it.
Oh, is it okay now?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, so I wanted to ask the finance committee and the select board if they would be willing. I know we voted last night on the capital budget for 1.3 million. We were asked by the school if there was any possibility for us to move some of those projects around, if we could still stay at the 1.3 million. I know we voted in total for the 1.3 million. It would still remain in the school. And if you are okay with that, the capital outlay would like to have another meeting next week to vote the detail.
Yes, no change in the total. It's just...
No, but it'd have to be in the warrant article, right?
Yeah, and it's not printed yet, so...
Correct.
Oh, you're printing it tomorrow?
Yes.
I thought you guys...
You got time.
Because we're meeting next...
We're meeting Tuesday.
We're meeting Tuesday to go through all the articles, right?
Yeah.
But you're saying we'd have to change it.
We could, you know, on Tuesday, right, the 11th, we could table capital and then bring it back on the 18th. I'm sorry, what day is your meeting, Pat?
Well, we were going to meet as soon as possible to make sure this gets in. So I think the earliest we could get an agenda and do it would be Tuesday. If everybody, if that works for everybody, I'm not sure.
Not an issue. Would we vote it on the 18th, right?
It's not an issue. No, it isn't. Because you, again, you voted the amount, you didn't vote the items.
It's a clerical issue versus nothing changed, no total changes.
Correct, no total changes.
We're just going to change dollar amounts from one and bring one back. If that's okay with everybody here.
And all the items stay the same?
Yes, we're going to be bringing back the berm at the school and reducing the playground surface.
One of our members, Jackie Lake, reached out to the school and this was something that, I think we missed the rating that they wanted one more than the other. So she reached out and said she'd like to make that request.
They would have preferred the berm, and we thought that that was a lower level. So otherwise, we would have went the other way. And they understand they would be okay with that.
Yep.
So we'll meet on the 11th and the 18th?
Yes. Right now, we have scheduled meetings on the 11th and the 18th.
Okay.
Great. I would offer the finance committee, if you would like to make a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Okay.
Second.
Second. Okay. Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you, guys. Would anyone like to make a motion?
Do we have any other business?
I don't think we have anything else on the agenda. All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, zero. Thank you, everyone. Thank you, Eric Fiftieth.